The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Waverne City Council held here at the council chambers Monday, November 8th, 2021. The first thing that we want to do is we want to talk about the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, a strategic planning priority meeting held October 25th, 2021. Do we have with that, do we have a motion, please?
I can make that motion, your worship.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Additions to the minutes, council, city manager.
Thank you, your worship, there's no additions to the agenda tonight.
There are no public hearings and notices, no delegations, proclamations, or petitions at this point in time. Reports of standing committees, consent agenda, we have, on the consent agenda, we have the water treatment plant report, the cash activity report, public works report, and the fire department report for September and October. Do you have a motion to accept these, adopt these, please?
Yes, your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Seeing none, all in favor, carried unanimously. Motions, counts payable, Director Finance, please, any comments? No? Okay, go ahead, may I have a motion?
You bet. Your worship, I'll make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $572,055.16 from October 22nd to November 4th, 2021 be approved.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Farmland tender, again, Director Finance, this all?
Yeah, so the city of Waverne has 2,125 acres of farmland in various locations near the city, and in the past, it's always been leased on a crop share basis, so for 2022, we decided to go with a cash basis. So we put it out to tender on October 7th, and it was posted on SaaS tenders and the city website. The proposals were received by the city of Waverne no later than October 21st at 2:00 PM, and we had five proposals were received. So I've summarized the bids in this table. So the tender included a clause to give first right of refusal to the current leasing on the highest bid price. Due to this clause, Norm McFadden was offered to lease Northwest 15814 at $100 per acre, in which he declined, and Gab Farms was offered to lease the locations 1 through 7 at a rate of $100 per acre, in which they chose to exercise on locations 2 through 7. Location 7 has a 7 and a 7A, and Dan Poulfer submitted his bid based on an extra 15 acres south of the river at Northeast 3814, and which was not, it's never been ceded, so this wasn't really included in the tender. It's unique because there's only access to the land that isn't available for other renters to get to, so I asked Gab Farms about it, and they said they wouldn't have access to it to get to that land, so, but Dan Poulfer does have access to it. So it is recommended that for from 2022 to 2026, the farmland tender be awarded as follows. So location 1 would be awarded to Darren Larson Farms at a cost of $100 per acre. Location 2 through 7 would be to Gab Farms, Inc., at $100 per acre. 7A would be to Dan Poulfer at $81 an acre. 8 through 11 would be to Norm McFadden, sorry, 8 and 9 would be at $55 an acre, and 10 and 11 at $40 an acre, and location 12 would be to Darren Larson Farms at $100 an acre. A total of $160,840.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the farmland tender bids be accepted as presented for a lease term beginning in 2022 and ending after the 2026 crop year is complete.
I'll second that, your worship. Questions? This is, a four-year lease is not too long in today's rising market of prices and things, you don't think? Okay. I probably would have liked to have seen a two, but if, I'll take your wisdom on this one and go from there. Moving forward, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Introduction bylaws, this is a second and third reading of the council procedure bylaw. Jeanette?
Thanks, your worship. So at the October 25th council meeting, council gave first reading to the council procedures bylaw. It's an amending bylaw, just to make a few changes. The changes are as follows. The first change, designating someone to call a special meeting if counts of council. If the position of clerk is vacant or the clerk is unable to act, this is a change in the city's act, so we just have to change this to be compliant with provincial legislation. The second item is add the provision of holding council meetings electronically. Third provision is to reverse the order of the city council and strategic planning and priorities meetings to adjust the beginning time of the council meeting to begin at 5:00 PM. And then the last item is the provision to adjust wording of board and committee appointments to allow for a variation of terms depending on the terms of reference of each board or committee. Some boards and committees have terms of reference, and we need to just acknowledge that in our bylaw. So if council chooses to give second and third reading to this amending bylaw tonight, then it would take effect January 1st, just to allow some time to give notification to the public, the media, and any other stakeholders, that we will be changing the time of our council meeting to 6:00 PM.
Do we have a motion for the second reading, please?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2021-3437 to amend the council procedures bylaw 2018-3390 for the city of Waverne be read a second time. I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Do you have a motion to read the third reading?
Yes, your worship, I move that bylaw 2021-3437 to amend council procedures bylaw 2018-3390 for the city of Waverne to be read a third time and passed. I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Go ahead, do the third reading. That was, what's third? Okay, I thought, right, you only have to say read and ask for a third reading if we're doing it all in one evening. Okay, so that has passed completely. Thank you. Moving forward, Janine, there's no unfinished business. Janine, home occupation, barber shop, if you would, please.
Good evening, council. An application has been received to operate a barber shop or hairdressing business out of their residence at 314 Confederation Drive, located in the R2 Zone. The business will operate 3:00 to 8:00 PM on weekdays as well as during the day on Saturdays. This would be considered a controversial use, as this business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, a few cars per day, parking is available on the driveway. Home-based businesses are permitted in the R2 Zone and residential dwellings, but are generally deemed controversial when customers or clients are attending the home, and they require public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on October 20th to all neighbors within a 50-meter radius of the applicant's home, and residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections were received. Home-based businesses are permitted, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless specific provisions of the bylaw are contravened. Home-based occupations generally must meet the following provisions: be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence, be compatible with residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. Staff have reviewed the application under section 5.1.19 of the zoning bylaw, and are of the opinion that the home occupation application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, and therefore are recommending option number one to council. Option number one is that council approves the home-based business permit for a barber shop/hairsty salon at 314 Confederation Drive, subject to the conditions that are listed. Option number two would be the refusal of the home-based business permit at 314 Confederation Drive, and the reasons would have to be provided for the refusal tonight.
Do you have a read, motion, please?
Your worship? Your worship, I would move that council approves home-based business permit 2021.012 to allow for a barber shop/hairdressing business at 314 Confederation Drive, Lot 9, Block 83, Plan AR 4506, subject to the conditions as presented.
Your worship, I would second that motion.
Discussion, Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. Janine, I thank you so much for your work on here, I think these are a great idea, I just always want to remind folks that they do have to abide by these rules, it can only be you working in your home-based business, it can only be 25%, and to comply with the signage. I know that we are going to make efforts in the future to be sure that we monitor those things, so thank you for your hard work.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Development permit, liquor store, go ahead, Janine.
Discretionary use development permit application has been received for the development of a liquor store at 623 First Avenue Northeast. Site is currently zoned highway commercial, and a liquor store is a discretionary use. The site is surrounded by two places of worship to the west and north, residential apartments to the north, a car dealership to the east, and First Avenue Northeast to the south. The applicant had originally submitted an application in fall of 2020, which was subsequently denied by the Planning Appeals Committee of the SMB, based on the fact that warehousing and wholesaling are not permitted or discretionary in the highway commercial zone. The applicant has since revised their application and is proposing to only have a retail store at this location. As a discretionary use, neighborhood notices required to be sent out to all property owners within a 75-meter radius of the subject property, notifies them of the application and the opportunity to provide their comments, concerns, or feedback to council. Staff received correspondence from three separate parties regarding their concerns with the proposed development, including the Cavalry Baptist Church, Silver Heights Bible Church, and a resident. Copies of the correspondence received from the neighbors have been attached to this report. Concerns were raised about the appropriateness of a liquor store in proximity to churches, daycare, and low-income housing. There were concerns expressed about adding another liquor store in Waverne and substance abuse or addiction, and materials have previously submitted, been submitted through previous appeals regarding these concerns. Both churches are also of the opinion that the liquor store use is not an appropriate use for this location, given the types of counseling services that they are offered by the churches, including addiction counseling. I've included a map of where the subject property is, as well as a map from the zoning And then I've included the updated site plan that they have submitted, and the building floor plan that they've submitted, and they are compliant in terms of parking on the site, with 26 parking stalls proposed and 25 are required, and there's no access through the rear being proposed now. So the subject property is located within the highway commercial zone, and surrounding properties are zoned residential and highway commercial. There are residential properties to the north across the back alley from the highway commercial properties on the First Avenue Service Road, including the subject property. The proposal is for the liquor store use to occupy the entire existing building, and 26 parking spaces are proposed in front, which meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. Previous application had included a significant portion of the building intended for warehousing, wholesaling, and distribution of liquor with two loading docks proposed in the rear. However, the current application before council has removed all of that, and the application is for only a retail liquor store with no loading or parking proposed in the rear, and no use of the municipal buffer or back alley. The city does not have any requirements in the zoning bylaw in terms of separation distances between liquor stores from other uses. The liquor store is being proposed in a highway commercial zone with a variety of commercial uses existing, including licensed restaurants, convenience stores, car dealerships, and retail stores. The intent of the highway commercial zone is to have uses for the traveling public and/or uses requiring a high level of accessibility being adjacent to the minor, major highways. So the options before council tonight would be to approve the development permit for a liquor store at 1623 First Avenue Northeast without further conditions. Option number two would be to approve the development permit, subject to the following conditions: This permit shall only be for the approval of a liquor store, including retail sales. No wholesaling or distribution of liquor is authorized through this permit. No access to the rear of the property through the municipal buffer shall be permitted. As required by Table 4.2 in the zoning bylaw, there shall be a minimum of 25 parking spaces based on, provided on site based on the existing 8,000 square feet of building floor area, and a minimum of one parking space shall be barrier-free parking space. The parking spaces shall be in compliance with the minimum size requirements of the zoning bylaw, with up to 30%, meeting the requirements for compact car spaces. They shall be clearly demarcated, and there shall be curbs or fences separating the parking areas from the adjacent properties. Any areas not occupied by buildings, parking, loading, or storage shall be landscaped in accordance with the zoning bylaw. All property, including land, buildings, structures, and outdoor storage shall be maintained to the minimum standards in the City of Waverne Property Maintenance Bylaw, and a City of Waverne business license shall be obtained prior to operation. Option number three would be to refuse the development permit, and those reasons would have to be provided tonight for the refusal. Discretionary use is ready to be evaluated based on the criteria in the zoning bylaw, which include consistency with the objectives and policies within the official community plan and zoning bylaw. Staff have evaluated the application based on these criteria, and are of the opinion that the application does meet the criteria. Therefore, staff are recommending option number two, to approve the discretionary use development application, subject to the conditions included in option number two.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the development permit application 2021-029 for a liquor store at 1623 First Avenue Northeast, Block H, Plan 101355713 be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Questions, comments? Janine, I just want to say that this has been long ago, we've did the, there were some errors that, I being one of them, made some errors in judgment as to where, how some of the bylaws were lit, and we are now in compliance, full compliance with what the bylaw and the zonings are. So there is where I will fully support and move forward with it. Any other comments? Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, worship. Again, Janine, thanks for your work on this file. Some questions, most of these questions, I know you've covered, but for public consumption, I want you, I'm gonna make sure they know, we know what's going on. The liquor store that we're proposing tonight is similar to the one in the Waverne Square Mall, would that be correct?
Yes.
The next question I have is, there's no room for tables and chairs to serve alcohol in this position, particular building at this time?
It's my understanding that it would just be retail, and there wouldn't be any consumption of alcohol.
Okay, but in the future, say, two, three years from now, they decide to do that, was that an option to do that at this store?
They would have to go through the development permit application again.
And the hours of our operation, any idea what the hours are?
I have the applicant here, and he may be able to shed some light on that if he'd like to.
The SLGA allows us to, hours of operation, the SLGA allows us to be open until 3:00 AM, so, I mean, any given day of the week, we can be open until 3 o'clock legally, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's it.
No?
Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, worship. Mr. George Cawkes, if I can get you to step back up to the mic for a sec, I know one of the initial concerns was the sightline between the churches and the play school around the building, and you were willing to build a fence to kind of inhibit that sightline, is that something you're still willing to do?
It's still an issue, of course, yep.
Mr. Jenkey?
Sorry, Mr. George Cawke, I have one more question for you. I tried to catch you before you sat down. And also apologies for bringing this up again, I know it's already in black and white, and Janine's already spoken to it, but can you confirm that you have no intention to use the back alley?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna keep the current location, like our current offsite location where it's at, so all our trucks will be there, so, so we won't have to use the back lane at all, no.
All right, thank you. I'm done with Mike, anybody else want to?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. O, you have to.
I don't need Mike for this one. Well, I mean, he can come up if he wants, but I, I just want to say, I'm, you know, the mayor commented as well, this has been a bit of a journey for us, so I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate your neighbors, all working through this together. So I think we can all appreciate the concerns of the three letters that we got, we thank them for their input and being valuable members of our community. I would encourage you guys, and I know you will do that, you'll work with your neighbors to make sure it's a success up there, I'm gonna support this, I think it's a great spot, and I'm excited to see it. So I look forward to hearing the success story a couple years from now, continuing on. Thanks.
Further comments, questions, seeing none, all in favor, carried unanimously, we go first. The permit was approved, there we go. Moving forward, inquiries and announcements, pardon me? Oh, infrastructure revitalization program, sorry, apologize. Director of Engineering, Wilkinson, please, if you would.
Thank you. So I'm gonna be presenting on the infrastructure revitalization program. So one of the strategic plans of the engineering department was to assess the local improvements plan for roads, sidewalks, and curbing, what we're gonna, I will be calling surface infrastructure. Steps that were taken to fully assess the situation include evaluation of the current local improvements model, detailed review of the infrastructure condition assessment, data collection across other municipalities, and a review of different funding models. So I'm just gonna start off with a little background on the current local improvements plan. So the Local Improvements Act of 1993 just defines a local improvement as any infrastructure worker service paid for by charging all or part of the cost against the property that benefits from the worker service as a special assessment to the property owner. The Act provides strict procedures that must be followed by the municipality to declare a local improvement project and receive approval to proceed. The Act also provides measures to allow property owners that are given notice of the intent to proceed with an improvement and have the option to petition against the work. There are three ways in which a local improvement may be initiated. One is a petition from landowners requesting the work, although council is not bound to do the work requested, by council on its own initiative with owners having the right to petition against the work, by council on its own initiative with owners having no right to petition against the work. So historically, Waverne has utilized the Act to perform infrastructure work, primarily paving and concrete works on streets and roads. It has at times been a useful tool, a useful tool to rehabilitate aging infrastructure within our transportation network. Currently, when property owners in the city of Waverne receive improvements to their street or neighborhoods, the cost of these improvements are shared between the adjacent owners and the city. It typically has been a 60-40 split, although the formula varied. Legislation does not require the municipality to contribute a specified percentage of the cost. This is a decision of council which may be dependent on several factors. Some areas which may impact a council's decision include precedence, how much did the municipality contribute to previous local improvements of a similar nature; affordability, what is the current financial state of the municipality; the general benefit, to what extent does the public at large benefit from the project; legislative requirement, the municipality must assume part of the cost if a local improvement is being renewed or replaced before the expiration of the lifetime of the previous work. Local improvements are billed to the property owner for their share of the cost of the improvement in the year following construction. Property owners do have the option to pay the full portion of the charge by the due date or pay through annual installments with their property taxes. The cost of a local improvement is spread over several years to minimize the annual payment property owners must make. Also, if a property owner sells their property before the local improvement charges are fully paid off, the new property owner assumes responsibility for making the remaining payment. The major constraint in utilizing the Act to perform this work has always been the petition process, which is often used by the property owners, as is their right, to avoid the special assessment. When a project is petitioned out, much-needed work is delayed, infrastructure deficits increase, and administrative planning efforts become ineffectual. The last such local improvement project in Waverne was undertaken in 2015, with the work being completed in 2017 based on contractor delays. The city of Waverne has five local improvement projects left that still have payments owing on them. After 2021, there will only be three left. These remaining projects will have one each end in 2022, 2023, and 2024. The taxpayer portion left to pay on these five projects are just under $40,000 in 2021, $7,500 in 2022, $4,500 in 2023, and $3,900 in 2024. So now I'm just gonna give you a little background of the infrastructure condition assessment. In 2019, the city of Waverne had an infrastructure condition assessment done for water mains, roadways, and drainage. There is currently 95,000 meters of roadway inventory. During this assessment, 80 kilometers of paved road infrastructure was inspected. The road network was divided into three classes: arterial, collector, and local. Payment defect data was collected for each segment noting defect type, severity, and frequency, or degree of coverage for that section. A pavement condition rating, PCR, was assigned to each segment based on the type, severity, and frequency of defects encountered. So there's a table below that kind of goes through the different PCR values, anywhere from a zero to a 10. Obviously, the lower number, the worse condition it is in. Another important component of the analysis is the idea of maintaining an appropriate service level for each of the road classes. This is done by assigning the appropriate PCR intervention value to each road class. This is a level at which intervention is undertaken to address the performance of the roadway. So for an arterial or a collector, you would intervene at a value of seven, a local you would intervene at a value of six, and this is just honestly based on traffic in the area. So just to give you an idea of Waverne, there's a little diagram here, and it shows the distribution of PCR values for all the classes of roads. So as shown, it's apparent that a large majority of the system is classified in the good and fair categories across the road classes. This would indicate that for the most part, Waverne's streets are in good condition, reasonably drivable, with few roads that are particularly poor or treacherous, and a few that are in excellent shape with few defects and a great ride. It is worthwhile noting that 31% of all roadways have a PCR value of eight, indicating that many of the city's streets are starting to show signs of wear and may soon progress to a fair state without intervention. This rating is on the lower end of the good rating and higher end of the fair rating. Once these ratings drop from a value of eight to seven, there will only be 9% of the city's roadways with a good rating. So the next table is just kind of breaking down all the, this was what I went through all the classes with the arterial, local. So then, Table 3.6 kind of goes by the road areas and the cost of treatment methodology. So Table 3-6 lists overall requirements for the network to bring the system to the targeted PCR. This can be further refined by identifying infrastructure that meets the criteria of just meeting or not meeting the target PCR, and is at the point where further degradation would push the asset to a higher-cost intervention. In this way, we are targeting asset intervention at a point of the infrastructure lifecycle when it is more cost-effective to repair rather than targeting the lowest-quality infrastructure, which is typically the highest unit cost to repair, or a blanket scenario where we try to address all the issues without effective prioritization. A long-term target investment of $18.7 million is estimated based on the assumptions made. This would indicate an appropriate level of investment of approximately $1.9 million per year over the next 10 years, and that was based on this condition assessment report we had done. So strategic plan. Best practice in asset management tells us that a program of preventative maintenance and rehabilitation is the most affordable and effective means of managing infrastructure. A program of preventative maintenance and rehabilitation can extend the life of an asset and is expensive in the long run. If preventative maintenance and rehabilitation is not performed, infrastructure will deteriorate to a level that requires full reconstruction, which is a complete replacement of road structure. Rebuilding roads that have deteriorated to a condition of poor is significantly more costly than if preventative maintenance and rehabilitation practices are being followed. Early in its lifespan, the road Early in its lifespan, the road structure deteriorates relatively slowly and may not require any treatment for almost a third of its expected lifespan. Then, as its service level declines, light treatments may be appropriate. Later, as the condition declines further, more expensive treatments, such as overlays, may be required. At some point, the road structure deteriorates beyond a point which is acceptable. After this point, the road structure deteriorates beyond a point which is, is acceptable, sorry. After this point, the road structure must be maintained at a minimum safety service standard until a full rehabilitation or reconstruction is undertaken. So just this kind of graph here kind of shows that if you spend a dollar here on preservation, it eliminates spending $6 to $10 on rehabilitation later on. The administration's proposed approach is focusing on stabilizing the road and sidewalk infrastructure by re, by directing resources to roads in good or fair condition, followed by gradual improvement in level of service over the longer term, depending on available financial resources. This strategy will reduce or slow down the deterioration of roads and sidewalks to a poor condition and thus minimize the expensive reconstruction or rebuilds of roads in poor condition. Administration would also like to inspect underground utilities in areas projected for surface repairs. Any utility upgrades would be done before the surface repairs to eliminate damage to newly revitalized roads and sidewalks. As part of this, administration has created an infrastructure revitalization policy which incorporates a strategy to properly administer the program. And so I'm going to just go through the funding model and then I can pull up the policy before I do the recommendation. So the funding model. The financial investment required to maintain an infrastructure revitalization program is based on establishing acceptable levels of service that take into consideration capacity, affordability, and willingness to pay. The higher level of service, the more costly it will be to implement and maintain a program in the short run. In the long run, higher levels of service may be, prove to be more affordable since it would require a program of routine maintenance that greatly reduces the need for costly rebuilds resulting from deferred maintenance. Administration spoke and reviewed different municipalities on how they fund their roadways and sidewalks. Some municipalities still use a local improvement plan like the current one that Weyburn uses. Most are moving away from this model, though, due to an inability to complete infrastructure upgrades. An infrastructure fee was researched, but this was uncommon. When an infrastructure fee was implemented, it was used for utility upgrades, recreational facilities, or health long-term care facilities. The vast majority of municipalities commit a certain percentage of their budget to surface infrastructure upgrades, with some committing to an additional increase to the mill rate every year to add to the investment. The report conducted by Associated Engineering recommended an investment of approximately $1.9 million per year over the next 10 years. Administration does not believe this to be feasible based on the current investment and availability of funds. Keeping status quo of only doing road construction when a road becomes in poor condition or reactive patch repair due to complete degradation will only see a continual degradation of infrastructure to where all repairs will be extensive and costly. Administration is suggesting $700,000 per year to restore and maintain surface infrastructure. Currently, there is a local improvements fund that has $1.5 million. This has been built through past investment interests being allocated to this fund. In previous years, council has used the gas tax fund to do road repairs, though allocate, allocation of gas tax, investment income, and reserve accounts, a properly funded infrastructure revitalization program could be developed and sustained. City administration reviewed budget, grant funding, and has developed a five-year funding model for the infrastructure revitalization program based on a $700,000 investment per year. Year 2022 would invest $700,000 into the program from the Canadian, or from Canada Community Building Fund, formerly the Gas Tax, and then transfer $200,000 of interest earned into the reserve fund, which would put it at $1.8 million. 2023 would once again be looking at using $671,000 from the Canadian Community Building Fund, and then invest $28,000 into program from interest earned with a transfer of over $171,000 into the reserve fund, putting it at a little over $2 million. 2024, you would invest $200,000 into the infrastructure program from interest earned and invest $500,000 from the reserve fund, dropping it to $1.5 million. 2025 would be the same idea as long as 2026, and at the end of 2026, you would have $528,000 left in your reserve funding. Other funding options that still need to be investigated and can be looked at in subsequent years are the additional funds from interest earnings from the investment policy, an increase to the mill rate to create additional funds, and a review of the offsite development levy to include funding for the infrastructure revitalization program. So I'm just wondering if Matthew can jump to the policy quick, and I will go through the highlights on that. So our infrastructure revitalization policy is, is very tied to the asset management policy, and this is kind of just a subset of that because we will use the asset management policy to, to manage these as well. So this policy outlines the fundamental principles for asset management of surface assets, and this is specifically road, sidewalks, and curbs. And these principles, combined with council's commitment, will provide a consistent and coordinated approach to managing surface assets that demonstrates sound fiscal stewardship and secure long-term infrastructure sustainability. So a surface asset in relation to this policy is any city-owned roadway, sidewalk, or curb. Condition assessment is an assessment done on all road, sidewalks, and curbs that factors in type, severity, and frequency of defects encountered. And then service level determines at what stage intervention is required based on the condition of the asset. So the scope for this is applies to all existing and new surface assets, which include the road, sidewalks, and curbs within the City of Weyburn. Jurisdiction would be the Director of Engineering, or designate shall be responsible, to, in conjunction with the asset management policy, implement preventative maintenance and rehabilitation practices that extend the life and stabilize the surface assets' infrastructure. Roles and responsibility for council would be to approve policies, guidelines, and plans as they relate to the infrastructure improvement of surface assets, articulate community values and priorities, approve funding resources to implement the infrastructure revitalization policy and associated requirements. Director of Engineering would develop and update the infrastructure revitalization policy as necessary and present changes to council, develop, implement, and update infrastructure revitalization plans and programs, ensure the infrastructure revitalization program is in adherence with standard asset management practices and policies. The objectives would be to establish a program of preventative maintenance and rehabilitation to manage surface assets, establish a consistent approach in adherence with asset management practices to determine priority of surface asset improvements, establish and populate a condition assessment on all surface assets, extend the life of surface assets, determine an acceptable service level for all surface assets, and a continued investment into surface assets to maintain them at an acceptable service level. So as a recommendation, administration recognizes that a strategy is needed to invest in poor surface infrastructure and to prevent further degradation of the road, sidewalks, and curbing. It is recommended that the current local improvements plan be eliminated from use by the city. This current plan has grown stagnant and has reduced funding into proper surface infrastructure upgrades that are needed. Administration recommends that council adopt the infrastructure revitalization policy. This policy would be an ongoing investment into road, sidewalks, and curbing to restore and maintain surface infrastructure. An estimate of $700,000 per year is recommended that would be funded through gas tax, reserve accounts, and investment policy gains. Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation, please? Or did you want to go through that again, Dick?
Oh, no.
Anyway, what, what you said, you want to recommend what you said there?
Well, I certainly do, and there's a lot, and I...
But we will discuss it after you make a motion.
I make a motion that we proceed, yes.
Yeah, do I have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
That we proceed with the recommendation from the city engineer to go with the infrastructure program as a lead.
Okay, you will second?
I will second that, your worship.
Dick, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks a lot for your work on this, Jennifer. Like, you, engineering has done their work, now it's up to council to do their work. And it all comes down to money. Like, $2 million a year almost is a lot of money that we need for infrastructure. We're starting out with $700,000. It's a start, but long-term, we have to have a way to, to get these funds presentable because these roads need help, sidewalks need help, and we have to fund them. We talked one time at 1% increase in taxation, gives us $65,000. That's not much to do work on the infrastructure plan that is presented to us. So I mean, it's, this is long-term, we have to have a lot of vision and a lot of, a dialogue about this, and maybe buy a lottery ticket, but we need some funding to make this happen. And again, thanks a lot for your work on this.
Very good. Mr. Jenke?
I don't have much to add to what Council Mickler said. He's exactly right, though. I mean, this policy is fantastic, and I thank you for all your hard work on this, Janine, but it doesn't solve the problem in and of itself. If it doesn't get funded well enough, we'll be right in the same situation we are right now with crumbling infrastructure and not enough money to do the work that needs to be done. So council needs to make sure that enough funds are going into this fund that it can do, this policy can do its job.
Mr. Richards?
They don't have much more to add either than thank you, and, and I think that it, although we're a little bit behind, it's still fairly proactive measure before we really get into, to trouble. And Council Mickel's right, 700,000 isn't going to be enough, but it'll be a start. So thanks again.
Anything else? I guess the only thing that was, this also sets direction for, this council is coming down to, October was the first year anniversary of our council, and so this now sets the direction for the next future because we're not doing just till the end of this council, we're doing for going into the future too as to the way that we're planning. And so this was something that was talked about when our first council came in. I remember there's, at SUMA meetings, they were talked, different ones talked about it. We've now accomplished this, so that's very good, or we are about to accomplish this. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously, and now we can say we're going to accomplish this, that we're moving forward in a different direction that was talked about probably five years ago, five years ago and four years ago at SUMA conventions, when there were SUMA conventions and such. Inquiries and announcements, now I can say this. Remembrance Day will be virtual, that is a thing. Check with the Legion website and check with city websites as to what is going on. The other thing that is, for inquiries and announcements, I'm going to turn this over to Dick Mickle to make more of it because his grandson was on the comp football team, but they took the semifinals and they're moving into finals. Dick, go ahead, move yourself, talk about this. High school football.
Thank you, worship. Very grateful, thank you. This year's Weyburn Comp Eagle football team, led by head coach Jody Kerr, had a tremendous successful year on the football field. Currently, they have an unbeaten record of 8-0 and are preparing for their S5A provincial final championship this Friday in Regina against the Balgonie Greenall Griffins. The only previous provincial title won by the Eagles was in 2007. Not only have the Eagles been successful on the field, these young student athletes also have been leaders and ambassadors off the field. They have been huge promoters of school spirit at community, I mean, supporting other school teams, and they have volunteered and participated in community events such as the recent Communeathon, where they, along with the Gold Wings, raised approximately $1,500 for local charities. Many of these high school players also volunteered at times, practicing helping assistant coaches in the, in the Weyburn Minor Football Program, acting as role models and mentors for the younger up and coming football players. So ladies and gentlemen, along with coach Jody Kerr, the Eagles are coached by volunteers Darren Abel, Chris Mickle, Colton Nethercutt, Rob Umat, and Kyle Patterson. And just to take it one more step, a further connection, your worship, yes, I do have a connection to the Eagles. My son, Chris, has coached them for 25 years, and my grandson, Ben, is a grade 12 student and also plays on his team. But to top it all, your worship, I have to get this out, and I'm not bragging, but I guess I am. In 2018, I talked to a couple of coaches of the Weyburn Eagles and said to them, guys, by 2021, we're taking it all. And they sort of looked at me until last Saturday and they said, wow. And the reason, my reasoning behind this was that I followed minor football, which has been a tremendous supporter to the Weyburn football, where it is at the Combs School. Now, they built the system. I saw what was happening in Peewee and Bantam, and it's there, the talent was there, and I know for sure the coaching was there. So here we are, so here it is, we need that win to honor this vision that I had, and I hope, hope it's true. And so the game is at Lybelle Field, your worship, in Regina, Friday, November the 12th at 6:00 p.m. start time, so go Eagles, go.
Yes, and this, I was involved with minor football to some extent, well, helping coach and assistant coach in there, never head coach, but assistant coach. Dan Gulash was, started out there. We had Murray Benton doing a lot of the stuff. We had so many coaches that were out through the years, coaching from Peewee all the way up, and it has brought about just being one of those, another sport that is going to be working. They're going to work out, the Eagles are going to work out on Wednesday night, 7:30 out at Spark Center, so we have the nice, good center, under the lights, so they can work, practice, and that just shows the benefit again of the Spark Center that we're doing. So thank all involved to have the Spark Center being a part of it, and that just is, goes farther along as to what the development of sporting teams and the sports are within our area, and the value of the Spark Center and such, over there. So that is really good that way. Any other comments, inquiries? With that being said, there's no, no more motions, and so then we will call an adjournment of this meeting.